Ready? Good afternoon, everyone. This is the Titan Commission on Disability meeting for March 3rd, 2022. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at about 4:30, 4:36 PM. If we could begin the meeting with pledge allegiance, that would be great. Oh, sorry, it's replace. To the flag of the United States of America, to the party for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice brought up. Thank you very much. If we could do the introductions of those of us who are here. Everyone who is a member, including our board of selectmen person is here in person. I'll start with myself. My name is Jonathan Gale. I'm the D coordinator for the town of Titan and the Chair of the Commission. Nicole?
Nicole Mello, member.
Kevin?
Kevin Smith, member.
Ken, and it's Kevin Chico of Board of Selectmen, he is on the Commission on Disability.
And the next item is.
This review of middle school ramp.
So for the middle school ramp project, and we had this recently too. There are still a couple of small items that need to be resolved. Those are the rear walkways area when you come out of the emergency entrance behind the gym and the other side of the school as well just need to be resurfaced a little bit when it's warmer. The contractor said he would do that. Kevin is also going to be going around with the contractor visually to take a look at it and point out what needs to be done. We were told that there's a little bit of sagging in front of the front railing of the main entrance. And the contractor said he's taking care of that also. I think we may have covered this in a couple of weeks ago. But I just wanted to reiterate because we weren't able to get that done yet. I do wanna separately, just while we're talking about the school ramp, probably in the near future, sit down with the school and talk about what we can do to put together either a proposal or give them a request for a ramp to the stage as well in the cafeteria so that we can make the cafeteria fully accessible for persons with disability who have any reason to use the stage for school or town activities. So I don't think anybody has any questions about that at all.
Is there currently not a ramp at all? Or are we looking to put a block on a ramp?
We would be putting a ramp into the stage. There was currently not a ramp. For the stage, correct. Any other questions?
I was looking at the computer to see if anybody was trying to log on.
Don't want to repeat it all, just quick.
Did you do M O D project grant?
No.
No, 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 I just talked, what I, what I just talked about.
Oh, the middle, that's why I'm just, cuz I'm like, my mind's in a fog. I'm thinking that you moved on to the M O D thing you were talking about.
It was just the middle school and what we're doing, what you're doing to help out with that visually as well. And that's it. So we're done with that. The next item is the M O D project, uh, project updates. So we, we had a meeting just the other day with the Monday, I think last Thursday, actually, with the folks involved in the project grant. We are moving along with it. Tom Ferry is hoping to have the contractor on site by mid-April or early May to be working on the town hall walkway as well as with Kevin on the parks and recreation facilities for the walkways there. We have met also talked about the web accessibility. And we've met with the developer. We are in the process of giving the developers some information, a couple of pages on our site to see what they can do with it and how they would make it more accessible. That will help us determine with the contractor who is revised, whether we're not. We wanna stay with revised or not. We're hoping to stay with them. Assuming they can provide a fair amount of what we would like to do to keep the website accessible and make it much more accessible for people with all types of disability, not just people who are visually impaired. A lot of times when people think of a site that is not accessible, they think of people who are blind, but there are many other disabilities that require a website to be fully accessible as well. So we've met with revise. We're giving them some information. We're hoping to get that out to them early next week. And then you're back in a week or two later and we're, we're forward on that. The ramp to old town hall had the contracts have been signed with Mr. Aguirre, the building commissioner. And we're hoping that they'll be working on that and then probably, I imagine sometime within the next three months, they will be doing that. Kevin Smith has also been working with our building commissioner, Mr. Aguirre. And now Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, you've now ordered the fixtures, parts for the lavatories?
So not all of it. The doors have been ordered, the partitions. So for the new stalls have been ordered. We're working on getting a quote for the grab bars, soap dispensers, mirrors. So just like the, those little pieces, but we're well underway with trying to get all that. Like I think the partitions actually got ordered today and they should be here in six weeks. And then we have some work that we can do ahead of those coming in. So hopefully, I think the once Jim has the doors in, that's when like construction will actually begin. Cuz we can kind of keep that whole project rolling while keeping the bathrooms functional.
And what Jim did talk about also at the, the town department head meeting the other day was just a little bit of disruption with regard to the men's and women's lavatory upstairs and potentially having to have a few days of people going downstairs to use one of the lavatories, whether it's the men's or the women's. I think that has to be determined yet or how that's gonna be done. But there will be a period of time when one of the lavatories will always need to be closed while some construction is going on. So stay tuned for that information. The goal is gonna be to obviously be able to make sure that anybody who needs to can get to a laboratory. The thought of putting any kind of a laboratory outside of, up at the upper level or anything like that is not in the cards. So people may have to go downstairs for a couple of days, but we'll, we'll keep people updated about that. But other than that, the grant is moving along. I think all of the parts are coming together.
Oh, one other thing too. So actually I got the quote from Michael McDuffie for the.
Ask you about that, yes.
So he sent, he sent that back. And then also I reached out to, so he's actually distributor for Grass Match USA. I reached out directly to Grass Match USA for a quote, but haven't heard back yet. And then I've just been researching other websites because I haven't found an like comparable product yet. So like to reach out for a third quote.
And I'll forward, I'll forward you what we have from M O D. So that if I didn't already, so that you can see what they've given us to. It's not quite comparable for the same type of mats. And actually, they're a little more expensive.
Well, at that point, then I wouldn't even know. Except they're gonna be more expensive. That's not gonna be the route we're gonna go.
Yep. And we did, I may have mentioned this in our last meeting, we did get a chance to go over to the garden and actually inspect the beds that Theo had put together, the scout who was doing his ego project. And he did an amazing job. They're really, they're looking really, really well. Looking forward to residents being able to start planting in the spring and take advantage of the accessible beds and the rest of the garden as well. So does anyone here have any questions on rates on our going forward? No?
Okay.
And our next item is.
New business, a few revised budget requests.
So for the budget request, we had all voted at, at our last meeting together for line items for flat roof power increase for, which would have been the administrative support that I need visually. When I sat down with Mike Mullin to go over the budget a little over a week ago, Mike was concerned about that $500 increase making it through FinCom. Because the budget says, everybody has already heard, I'm sure, are gonna be very, very tight for the whole town this year. So I, this is the last way to put it, but knowing that we would be able to probably meet again in the meantime. He asked me if I would be willing to forego the $500 increase for next year in the budget, knowing that if we need to, we can go to the Board of Selectmen or, you know, find from the other, the other items in our budget for that additional $500. And I told him that I thought that would be acceptable to all of us. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that. But I did indicate that I thought that that would probably be acceptable. We probably for, for the purposes of keeping it technically correct, I think we should, if we're, if we're willing to accept the revised budget, which is removing that $500.
So which would become level funding.
Which would be level funded across the board. I think it would make sense for somebody to make a motion for that and for us to, to formalize that. But I didn't know if anybody had any discussion about that first.
Well, that was, and that was just the, the line item for an increase for your administrative support.
Support, yes. Everything else is still the same.
But it's been openly discussed that if you go over the allocated funds that you will be able to revisit and the Board of Selectmen will be able to decide whether or not you get that funding.
That's correct. Okay, yes.
So my question is, are you gonna be asking for this fiscal year then? Because you have not overly.
So for this fiscal year, what we're going to do is we're gonna, if we need to, we will move funds from one part of the budget. So we have other line items to the budget this year. We have $500 for supplies, which we haven't touched yet. And we have another $500 for administrator as well, I believe, because we had a total budget of $5,000. So if we need to this year, because the amount that Justine has now submitted to the town accountant is about $700. So if we do go over the $1,000 that was budgeted, we can move it from another part of our budget this year.
And when you say we, you mean the commission?
The commission, yes, yes.
And it doesn't have to go to the board to change?
No, because of the amount, no, that's correct.
I do have a question about this. It's not, is when it's presented at town meeting or within the budget process, is it presented as the Commission on Disability budget or is it presented as the ADA coordinator budget?
It's presented as the ADA budget.
So it's just a blanketed?
Are you sure though?
Well, before, let me rephrase that. Before it was presented as the ADA budget, because we didn't have a formal commission.
Okay.
So, and technically, we still don't have a formal commission because the bylaws haven't been approved by the Attorney General's Office yet.
Right.
Cuz they're behind. So, once it's approved by the AG's office, then it can be presented as the commission's budget on behalf of the town. But until then, it's presented as the ADA budget.
Okay, so then essentially, I'm just thinking of the logistics of all of it. You have, you unilaterally have the decision to make. I think when we do this, it should be more of a recommendation as the commission.
You're right. I mean, I suppose technically.
Well, I'm just thinking about the red tape of it saying, if something like this happens and you need to move on it, technically you can. I don't think, you don't need our approval.
No.
It would just be our recommendation.
Correct. That's correct. But I think it's important for everybody for transparency. To be aware of what's going on because that, you know, we're voting on the overall budget, but for the line items because of the amount, no.
So, so what is listed as the ADA coordinator's budget, right? And that's scheduled for to be heard by the Board of Selectmen next week.
Yeah, it's on the 16th.
I didn't know, I guess September 9th.
Isn't it, I thought it was the 16th. Unless they just changed it again. I thought originally it was the sixth. Maybe they changed it now because there were other things the other day. They had to be put on for the 16th.
Well, this is the one that we have yesterday at the meeting. Is it? I thought there was on the 16th of that. Yeah, no, I, what I see here is the it's the night.
Okay, well, even if it's the night, I'm gonna be ready in there. There's nothing to, to have to change or discuss. Mike Mullin indicated, he didn't feel it was absolutely necessary that we'd be there, but I'm gonna be there anyway, in case there are any questions.
So what are we leaving it as is?
Well, we, well, no, cuz the last meeting, we, we voted to, to increase it 500.
Right, right. So, so we would have, we would have, need a motion just to indicate that we've agreed to level fund to remove that $500 increase for administrative costs for me for support in order to level fund for this year, for the next fiscal year, 2023.
Is that okay?
Oh, yeah.
I just wanna make sure you're okay with it. Well, I was gonna make a motion. Alright, so I will make a motion that we request the ADA coordinator, coordinator budget be level funded for fiscal year 2023.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Kevin?
Hi.
Nicole?
Hi.
And Jonathan stepping down, not necessarily, but I, we have it unanimously. Thank you.
So on a new business, if I could just add one thing. Yep, I attended the PCR, had a Zoom, wasn't Zoom, it was Microsoft Edge, I guess. We had this afternoon on the trails. And they talked about different plans and different places that were available to have the trails from some of the, the time and vice versa. But they didn't, I wanted the commission to know that they had a list of the stakeholders in the ADA coordinator is one of the stakeholders as well as the commission on disability. So you'll be getting all the same information that we get, that I got. And so your involvement, commission's involvement in the trails, you know, obviously we wanna make sure it's accessible. Second, I have the mats all the way.
No.
True, but there's gonna be a couple of parking areas, that kind of stuff that people have, are able to access it, so.
I think that's good. And I, I know that Rachel is very, very aware of wanting to make it as accessible as possible. But and every member of the trust committee is. So thank you very much for sharing that. No, so that's, thank you. Thank you. And we had other items there as well?
No, committee reports now. It's time for that to put that. So it's gonna start with Kevin, Best Buddies update.
Go ahead. Okay, so we, you all know that we successfully created Titan Citizens Best Buddies chapter, and we posted on Facebook about it to spread a little bit of information about the program. One thing that did come up with that is, so I shared it, my, my daughter's in a little, a chit group of, you know, kids around between seven and eighteen, or seventeen, and a couple of them like, oh, we signed up. And I'm like, awesome, but that's not what this is for. So I have to do, actually, what I think I'm gonna do with this is I'm gonna create a specific Facebook group for the citizens chapter. And actually, I talked to Matt, who we all met with from Best Buddies via Zoom. And he said, the best way to approach that is to not discourage the kids' like interaction if you're doing a group activity. He goes, but to try to, but also encourage the parents to sign themselves up for it. And he goes, and then if you're having a fun activity day, he goes, cuz a lot of times that's what happens with the citizens chapters, like families will hang out. He goes, they'll go have dinner together. It becomes, you know, what really a friendship should look like. He goes, so it's okay. He goes, we're just not gonna ever, he goes, you're not gonna create matches for kids because that would only go into the system under a school chapter. He goes, but it's not like, again, you don't wanna discourage it because like if families stop coming, you bring, you, your kid who has I D D and another kid who doesn't, they're gonna organically become friends anyway. So we wanna promote that. I think for the community, but for, you know, more of the clerical purposes of best buddies, the, the only actual matches that would be created would be between two adults over the age of 18. So there's a little bit of, you know, community outreach that still needs to be done to kind of explain it. But I think we, we should do our best anyway to try to include anybody, especially when it comes to like community events.
I had a question that folks were asking me. Like any kind of, like, if we, like, folks in wheelchairs, like, obviously, they can, there's no, they were worried about how would they get places, like, stuff like that. And like, well, they would meet, meet up, like, we didn't need to have somebody that you can only be with someone if you have a wheelchair van. Like, they'll never, they'll never make a friend who has a wheelchair van. So, like, there's no there's no criteria in regards to, um, I can't think of the terminology, like disability, like, you're not gonna say you're in a wheelchair. No, you can't have Best Buddy.
No, I don't, no, well, no, I don't.
That defeats the whole purpose of it being towards the I D D community.
The goal too is, you know, whenever there are activities, the goal is to have the activities in the location that, that is accessible. Right, for wheelchairs, you know, whether, whether a person, you know, has, is in a wheelchair or a person has different types, type of disability or developmental delay. The goal is to have the activity in a place where everybody can participate as well. You know, one of the things I'm thinking about out loud, and this may be something to explore, for example, because you know what, what you're mentioning about wheelchairs and accessibility and transportation and so forth. I think the town has, the Veterans Agent has a van that is accessible. And I wonder what would be involved in us wanting to procure that if we needed to for activities. And who would be the designated driver? Probably, I'm sure, Corey Person, et cetera, to the town because it's a town vehicle. But if we're doing these things as town events.
Well, well, we're not though. Well, we're doing this as citizens.
As citizens, but as citizens, we still may be able to use
Right.
the vehicle because it's a public event. And I think that's something
Correct.
exploring with the town administrator.
I mean, you would think that most of the time, I mean, especially like, so it might, whether it be a parent or a legal guardian of someone with a mobility issue. Usually, they're gonna have the means to bring them there anyway, you would think. But I mean, I, we, I think we're all of the attitude that we would certainly go out of our way to, like, if somebody needed a ride, like, I would go get them in the, you know, as long as.
I think they're envisioning, I would have to go pick somebody up, but they're in the wheelchair. How am I gonna do that? And I'm like, but you don't have to meet somewhere, like.
Right, yeah, that's like, yeah, it could be anywhere that, you know, it could be just going out to lunch. It doesn't necessarily, especially when you're talking about like the actual one-on-one relationships. Like, you're just gonna do normal things that you would normally do, you know, going out to lunch, don't wanna go see a movie. And most of these activities are accessible. And then like when you choose group activities, like, the first thing that pops into my head is like for a group, that's always fun, is like, if we all wanted to go bowling, like, you know, it's, we might need, you know, a little bit of help bumping a chair down onto where the lanes are. But like, I take layla bowling all the time. And it's like, it's nice that even they have those rail things.
Bumper guards, yeah.
Yeah, put up the bumper guard, you have the rail thing. So it's a pretty good accessible activity.
Nicole, do you know, and I'm gonna put you on the spot for a second, but do you know as the town nurse, if you have access to that van?
Not that I know of, well, it's off in my head.
And your air brake endorsement? What, what is it, 70? Is that the licensed foot boss? I think so.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yes.
I mean, we'll figure, I mean, the, some of this stuff, I mean, it's gonna be a learning process. I mean, even just from what I announced in the post, we're literally only the third citizens chapter in the state. So like even some of the questions that I asked Matt, who's like coordinating for the chapters, doesn't have the answer.
No, and then we're a couple, you know, in fact, there was a question, Kevin, I think one person said, do you have to be a Titan resident?
Yeah, that was another question.
And I think my response was no, because we said it's the south, it's the south coast, the south coast. So my response to that was no. There was another question where somebody asked about high schooler. And I didn't get back to that person yet because I didn't know whether they were referring to the volunteers as a high schooler or to be participant as a high schooler. So I wanna get verification.
Well, I did reply to, cuz I was Angela, and I did reply that there is a Best Buddies chapter at the high school.
Oh, that brings up a question. So you said 18, is it 18 the age?
Yeah, it's 18.
Someone else?
Yeah, it's 18 plus.
Right. Alright, it's just basically, cuz 22 is when they leave high school. So it's just.
Well, yeah, well, I guess, but it's what would be considered by the state and adult. So it doesn't necessarily, they don't necessarily have to be in high school.
Potentially still be in high school.
Yes.
Yeah, because of the transition.
Yeah.
But I think Angela specifically said something about like, I have a 17-year-old in high school. Like, if I remember correctly from that post. And it's like, well, that, you're better suited, you know, to go to the, the, the high school chapter. And then once you graduate or once you turn 18, then you could try the citizen's chapter. They're always gonna try to, and then, I mean, it doesn't have to be this way, but they try to, you know, make the matches age appropriate too. Cuz like, you wouldn't wanna put an 18-year-old with, like, not gonna be age.
Yeah.
Like with a 65-year-old. Sometimes that relationship, but no, I was just gonna say, sometimes that relationship will happen and it will be a great match. But I think overall, it's gonna be more age appropriate, you're gonna have more common interests. Not, but it's not to say that it wouldn't happen, but I think that's kind of generally how that, that flows.
I'll chair dance with a 19-year-old.
We, yeah, so I mean, this, this homework to do there to get it all rolling. But I think they're already, so they just gave me access. So there's like, there's a portal for signups. So I just became like the administrator of the Titan Citizens chapter. So now I can see who signed up. Um, and then I kicked that information back to Matt, asked him to do the background checks. Once the background checks are done, then you officially, like, you're approved as a, um,
As a participant.
A participant, a member, a member.
A member, a mentor of the program.
And then, um,
Do we wait till we have a certain amount and then start matching them or how does that work?
I think the best approach to do it is to really maybe get, like, say it's X amount of like 10 and 10 with and without I D D. And then maybe we, the first thing I think we should do is create a group activity, even if it's just a meet and greet somewhere, you know, the, you know, weather pending, if we wanna do some sort of picnic or we wanna go somewhere or do something. And then kind of get every, I think that's the best way to get everybody comfortable too. Cuz you're gonna get a lot of people that are unsure about how it works and what it's all about. So it's like, and you get others who would dive in and personal problem. But I think it's a nice way to kind of familiarize with everybody, you know, get to know one another. Let everybody mingle and then kind of see what naturally happens as far as making matches. I don't think we wanna like, I mean, obviously, we might be like, oh, you know, so-and-so would be really good for so-and-so cuz they both like to do outdoors evenings or whatever. But for the most part, I think we should just kind of start off with group activities and let it kind of work itself out.
Do you have clients in your program who are you thinking of or?
Yes, yeah. Most definitely. And we're, we got now, actually, somebody had that, had written on the Facebook thing, Works at Co-op. I saw it right downstairs and I was like, hey. Like, so she, by the time I already got downstairs, she already told everyone in the room about it. And they were all talking about it. And I guess one of them already has a buddy somewhere or whatever. And they're all talking about it. It's like, well, that went fast. They're very excited.
It's a really important, you know, my son, my oldest son, who is about two to late on the north, lives on the North Shore. And he's had somebody best buddies for years. Then he gets together with them, they do hikes, they do walks, they do group activities. It's really made a big difference in his world, for sure. And his friendship has lasted for a long, long time. I don't know how many years now, but at least 12 or 13, which is great.
Yeah, that's definitely nice.
You know, if it's the right match, it can really open up store, it opens up doors for, for everyone, really. Looking forward to it. But thank you for doing all you're doing, Kevin.
No, thank you guys for your help. I mean, you guys played a big part of it as well.
Well, we, we play a small part. We all play a small part, but you're doing a big part, so thank you.
Where, what, at what point are you with Co-op that, like, can you like, are you at the point where you can start to like?
Marketing to put something out. And then someone said to me today when I mentioned it to her, they were like, oh, we saw it on someone's agenda. And I was like, whose agenda? Cuz I wasn't invited to that meeting. So apparently, the word's out there. And then I'm just, I sent everything to marketing. She said she's gonna put flyer together.
Okay, so they're on board.
They're on board, yeah.
We can start like talking about how we're partnering.
Most definitely.
Cuz I know we're kind of waiting to just make sure everybody is okay with it.
They were excited.
That's awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, no problem. I'm happy for the folks. When we started talking about it and they were talking about how it'll be, like, so many of them don't have friends. It made me so sad. I was like, I'm, I'm friends with all of them. I thought it was enough. I guess not. So I'll be happy to see him be able to get out, especially with the pandemic. More than anyone, that, I mean, they've been really restricted in what they can do, just cuz they're so worried about them.
Yeah.
So I mean, a lot of them, some of them are just making it back to program now. I mean, we're two years into this. They're only coming back now. So this will be great for them.
Well, hopefully, there's enough interest so that we can get some kind of an activity going. It'd be nice by mid-April, late April. Potentially to have some kind of first activity somewhere.
Yeah.
You know, depending upon how mobile they are, maybe something at one of the schools, or maybe just a picnic down by the water. Or even maybe something to walk on one of the local trails and trails committee. So we'll see where it goes. That's great. Thank you. And the next item on our.
Yes, review the town policies. So just Jonathan and I have not got together, but we, we can talk about, we plan to get together and start to review our policies.
Yeah, I think since we just had the meeting, our previous meeting two weeks ago, decided this, that Ken and I would do it. Schedules haven't permitted it, but hopefully between now and the next meeting.
Yeah.
Ken and I can get together or begin to look at, look at the policies and have some information to report back.
Next agenda item is a review and approval minutes for December 2nd, 2021, February 17th, 2022.
So I have listened to them both. Thank you, Kevin. We've gathered both sets of meetings. Does anybody have anything to add to the meetings, to the minutes, or has everybody looked at them? Or is there a motion to accept either of both?
I reviewed them as well.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
I motioned to approve the minutes from 12 to 21, as well as to 17, 22.
I will second.
And is there any discussion in the minutes, except to say thank you to Kevin? Hearing none, we'll call that for a vote. Nicole?
Hi.
Kevin?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Hi.
The next agenda item is beginning planning for COB's participation at the 2022 Titan Biocenter event.
What the heck does a biocenter?
I don't know. They didn't have any biocentres in this town.
I don't know until about 5:50 today, if that's even happening.
So did you?
I said I won't know till 5:50 today if that thing's even happening.
What was the tentative date then?
My tentative date was, uh,
Was it July 9th?
July 9th, yeah. Then I, I gotta talk, I don't know, actually, I, I'll take input from you guys too now. Is I, there's part of me that wants to move it to a Sunday cuz it's a little bit easier. Because it's a little bit easier for me and some people that have reached out to volunteer, because I'm like, you have Saturday to kind of prepare and then hold the event Sunday. And I think we called it, we, you know, we started it last year late enough in the day that it doesn't really interfere with folks that go to church and stuff like that. So we're gonna have that discussion this afternoon.
The only thing that I think about that is that, if you do it Saturday, and it rains. You can do it Sunday of the same weekend as your, as your postponed.
I was actually gonna do a rain date of the following weekend, and then my damn sister decided to get married on that day, so.
So why don't you invite the wedding party?
Right, they, um, actually, and I'm gonna be the justice of the peace of the, whatever, what a minister of the ceremony. Very cool, they can go have fourteen-dollar fried dough for their reception.
They can be in the Dunk, in the Dunk.
The Dunkin', yes, so, in all seriousness, for a second, um. I'm assuming that, first of all, COD can have a table like we had last year, or events and activities, and I think. You know, last year we had a table, we had some things on it to show people. Uh, for the most part, about people who are visually impaired, what they have, but I think this year, planning earlier, it would be nice. To legitimately have some real activities that people can do.
Well, and we're gonna have the mats this year, which will make a huge difference, because we can create, there's, I know we talked about last year, like. Showing the difference between, like, what it was like being on like that, um, stoned dust material, going onto a map that's actually accessible, going onto grass. Like, for folks who typically don't.
Wheelchairs, yes.
Wheelchairs, so even, I mean, even a walker.
Yeah. I, I, I would like to be able to think this year of other types of disability we can have there. Um, I know last year, we hopefully had a couple of other volunteers that fell through, but in planning far in advance. Um, if we can have different volunteers as well, with different disability, who can share activities, maybe have a game or two going of some sort. This would be a great opportunity, honestly, to also have best buddies there, for example.
Yeah, well, I think, hopefully, if we could get to the point where we have enough membership and interaction.
Yeah.
We can have a couple of people that are members and have participated regularly up to that point, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna be tied up, so I'm.
No, I know, no, I realize that.
Try to visit with everybody, but it'd be.
That's why I'm, I'm just talking out loud, it makes sense, you know, to have different. Just, I just wanted to put it out there, at least now on the agenda, because I think it's important to start thinking about.
Well, and even stuff like that, so like, when I start to lay out, like, how I did, I almost did, like, our table chart last year, I almost did, like, so, Co-op wanted to come back again. We all have that relationship, so we could do Co-op Best Buddies, uh, COD, all together in one area, so, because you're kind of, everybody will tie together.
So if we can at least between now and next month, because I'm gonna keep it on the agenda.
Just brainstorm.
Brainstorm and think about different, other activities we can do, as I said, maybe different games. Or if there are, you know, some of the games that, you know, there might be some bond games that just have to have different, they're done a little bit differently. For persons with different types of disability, maybe we can set up a long game or two. Um, and have people participating in that, kids love to play games. So, and I did notice last year that a few of the tables where they were participatory things for kids. They were more up to stop, pay attention, spend some time like that, so I think if we can do that, that would be, that would be a way to do it. Yeah, just, just keep it on there, we'll keep, I'm gonna keep it on there, as I said, and our next item?
Yeah, it's, uh, begin thinking about, uh, simple ADA awareness activities we can offer schools in June of this year.
So I put that on there, because what I'm thinking of is, in June, um, near the end of the year. A lot of the classes, starts, the health classes for different ages and so forth, are looking for ways to provide other resources to. To kids of all ages, of different types of disability, different types of healthcare, different types of other things that they're doing. Because their schedules are kind of slimming out, and they're, they've, they've gone, a lot of times, they've gone through what's on the standard curricula. And I know in the past, I've gone into school systems myself in June. Um, from elementary school to high school, into different types of classes, health classes. Even English classes or social studies classes, because, again, it was a filler, but talked about different types of disability. Or talked about blindness and showing them games, toys, things like that, and I think that, um. If, if any of you or anyone in the public has ideas. It's a good opportunity to, to reach out to the school department, which I'd be happy to do in the next couple of weeks, if everyone's agreeable. And see if we can get a date or two on the calendar, and maybe formulate. Coming into a classroom and talking about different disability again, even things like bringing a wheelchair into a classroom and having kids tour around the classroom. Just root, see what it's like in a wheelchair, and have to go between different devices, or set up obstacle courses, uh, with a wheelchair, or with a white cane. Or talk about mental illness for, for children, and how it affects children. Um, where children who have dyslexia, even, that's still a disability that a lot of people don't think about, for example. There are ways we can do it, you know, showing a child on a big board of what another child who has dyslexia would be looking at when they're trying to read a word. Is important, to understand, maybe they'll think about it the next time a child is trying to read something, and then they have difficulty reading it. Um, if everybody understands just a little bit about what it's about. You know, or, you know, again, going back to, you know, thinking of best buddies, but with young kids. If you understand that a person has a little bit of a different deficit. Um, or even somebody coming in and talking separately about sign language for kids, for a half hour, teaching kids how to spell their name in finger spelling. All these things, to me, just make kids a little more aware. So I just, I wanted to get some feedback on that, too.
Definitely, I always like, um, I know in school, we had always done the activity where one of us was blindfolded, the other wasn't, and then they had to. To help the other person through some kind of, like, not an obstacle course, but just to show how you would guide somebody. And what it's like when you're being guided, um, that's always a good one, that I always.
Yeah, I think that would, that would be cool to do for that, I could actually probably get one or two people to come. Um, with a guide dog as well, and show folks how a guide dog is meant to work, and what, what a guide dog is used for.
It brings awareness.
Brings awareness. Absolutely does, yeah, um, but I think it would be nice to identify five or six, even just four or five different disabilities. And be able to put together a short curricula that covers either all four or five, or give classes an opportunity of which ones they would like. To have come in, and then we can reach out to, to all the schools, and, um. If nobody else is able to be available to go into schools and do it, I'm very willing to, you know, if it takes ten classes, if we can get ten classes, I'm, two, ten classes, I don't care. Ken, what did you have any thoughts?
I, I think it's a good idea, I'm willing to, to help, I'm sure you, I have you come up with whatever you want me to do. Uh, but I'm not, I'll be, I'll make myself available.
Alright, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to help in any way, Ken, and we have, you're gonna have to kind of steer us, but.
If I can steer it, um, we can make it happen. Okay, thank you very much, and our next?
Is, uh, set the next, uh, meeting dates, now, we agreed the last meeting, it's the first.
The first Thursday. Thursday of each month, so.
Yeah, it should be, um, yeah, April seventh, May fifth, and June second.
Yeah, that's what I, like, pulled it up, that's what I heard. So, um, I mean, I can sort of take that off the agenda every month, as long as we.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we have a standing reservation now.
I'll take that one off, and just remind you, next month, first Thursday. And we're all agreeable on that? Okay. Does anybody have anything else to say, like, Dad, Kevin, do we have anybody, any public?
No, I haven't seen anybody on there at all, it's just, just us.
Okay.
Um.
Anything else before we adjourn?
Uh, the only thing is, again, so back to, just to keep us like, quote-unquote official, in our next agenda, reorganize the, the committee. It's something that we have to have on our radar.
Yeah.
I'm like, I'm totally okay with being clerk, so. I'm totally okay with being clerk, so when we reorganize, it'll make.
Because I wanna, the only reason I haven't done it yet is because I was just waiting for the AG's office.
Yeah.
To get back to us and say that we're good.
Yeah, well, I think it's irrelevant, I think we should still.
I think we should now too, because they're, they've actually put us off, it looks like it could be for a year.
Yeah.
Um, because they're so far behind, so, you know, um, now that we have that for Mark, yeah, we want to put that on for our next meeting.
And then the only other thing, like, that comes to mind that I, and I can start doing it on the Facebook page, is like, I've been pro- promoting and posting a lot of what we're doing. But we've got to really stop promoting and getting new membership.
Members, maybe through Best Buddies.
That, I think that is gonna be a way, yeah.
Yeah.
Will be interested.
Yeah, I think, and I think anything that we post from there, well, we should also invite people to become members of the commission, no matter what it is.
Yes, yeah, I, they put a little thing on the bottom, you know, if you'd like to, I can put a link for the volunteer form right on there and everything.
Put a, we could put a link to the form, a link to the ADA phone number.
Yep.
You know, whatever it might be.
I don't want them to talk to you first.
Nobody, nobody wants to talk to me, I get it.
Yeah, that's just a couple of things that I'd like, have been on my mind, but for our meetings, is just promoting membership, which we've said that all along. Now that, I would think we're a little bit more in the public I have in the Facebook page, some of the projects we have going on, so.
Exactly, people are gonna see a lot of projects in the next, yeah, four to five months.
Yeah.
Which is gonna give us even more visibility, which I think is great. You know, I know there are a few other projects that I'm thinking of, and I know there are a few that probably each of us has. That we're thinking about going forward, I wanna start to look at some other grants for some other things in town, so I wanna be able to invite residents to. Give us suggestions on things they'd like to see ADA years for as well.
Yep.
Um, not everything is centered around streets and sidewalks, and ramps and walkways. Um, but there are other types of grants that other people are thinking about, and I think it's important to invite residents to the feedbacks, and then we can put that out there too.
Absolutely.
On our page, and ask people to submit ideas for grants. You never know, you know, that's another way to get people involved too.
And, and maybe we should, I don't think we put the agenda for the meetings, do we put it on our Facebook page?
No, actually, you know, th- this was the, I think, the only, the last one, we kind of had to do it quickly for the budget, this was our first one, and I, driving down here, I'm like.
Yeah.
So, yeah, moving forward, I'll make sure. Put the, yeah, the link on there, anyway, yeah. Yeah, I can always, I can make it like a clickable link on Facebook too, which is helpful.
Alright, that would be awesome, thank you, and then, um, in the future, if we have that too, I can also ask. Um, Portis Luton's office, if they can post it, that, they, or I can just have, um, just even post it.
Well, like, you know what, I was, actually, I've been having, like, even for parks today, because I was trying to pull, like, some public input, is, um, I can just send. And once I post it to, um, our page, I can always just send an email to Leanne and ask her to share it to the town of. Like, so it's, that's easy.
Okay, so that works, awesome. Alright, so unless anybody else has anything, um, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at five eighteen.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Pacheco?
I'll say.
Okay, um, hearing no discussion, I will take a vote on a motion to adjourn at five nineteen, probably now, Kevin?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
And that concludes this month's meeting of the Titan Commission on Disability, and thank you for participating, for all of us who are here in person. And for anybody who views this on YouTube.